I'd like to call the May 5th evening session of the Johnston County Board of Commissioners to order and welcome all of you who are here this evening to be with us. Also, welcome those who are watching on our YouTube channel and those who'll be watching it later. We have opened this morning with an invocation and a pledge, so we will not do that again. And just a quick reminder before we get into the items on the agenda, that the board's six priorities are educational funding, infrastructure, financial stewardship, land use, public safety, and our county employees. With that, we will move on to the first item, which is approval of the agenda. Any need to adjust any items on the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I approve that we approve the agenda as presented.
A second. We have a motion and second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda is approved. Next up, we have public comments. And before we get started in the official public comments, I'd like to recognize Adam Carroll, head of our PO staff, to discuss some recent awards.
Thank you, Chairman Lauder. So, we recently went to the North Carolina City County Communicators Conference, statewide conference for public information, communication, marketing, specifically within local government. And every year, a lot of these big organizations and towns, municipalities, and county governments apply for or showcase their work. And this year, we submitted some of our work in videography, photography, and then our recent rebranding project. And so, we wanted to show a little bit of what we had done. So, we won first place in photography and first place in videography, which is very hard to do. It's one of the more competitive categories. And then, we also came in second place in our rebranding project and in another video project. Is that promotional video, Ben? Yeah. So, and then, if you want to... Yeah, it's not working. So, this was the photograph we won first place in. And we're very proud of what we were able to do with it. We went with Bryant Spy being the cooperative extension to a tour of a few of the tobacco farms in our area. This was around Anger. And they were showcasing an international group that came to our area to see what was considered some of the best-grown tobacco in the state. And while we were out there, we were showcasing the farm workers, laborers. And this is one of the photographs that we took. And we're very proud of how it turned out. And these guys were out here, men and women were out here working very hard. So, and then, we'll go to...
How was you gonna say the... You can't see the detail on the screens that you can. I mean, the detail on that is amazing when you see the actual photograph, not blown up on a...
Yeah. And I think in what we were really trying to showcase with this photograph was kind of the unsung heroes of our agriculture community and the farm workers and laborers who really are out there every day getting the job done. And so, yeah, we were happy with how that turned out and got some recognition for that. And then, the branding, everybody knows about it, everybody's seen it. But we won second place with our branding. And I think you guys have been along for that ride. And it's been a long, big project. And we're happy with how it turned out. And then, the last, Ben cut together two of his videos that won. And you guys will see some familiar faces in here, I believe. But one was the veteran services, or not veteran services, it was the employee veterans that we featured in a video. And we interviewed some of our commissioners here and also some of our employees that are, that were in the service. And that turned out really well. Ben did a phenomenal job with that. And then, our next video is a recruitment video. And we just clipped 30 seconds out of each. So, we'll roll those for you real quick, so you can see them.
When I had the draft lottery of December 1969, I was in that first lottery. And my number came up 82.
I did have a sense of patriotism. Most people say they joined the military to serve their country. That was part of it.
When you're working in a squad and in a platoon, you have to depend on other people to make sure that the missions get carried out and everybody stays on task so that everybody stays alive. I feel a lot of veterans are good servants because we went into the military with a servant's heart.
I was seven years old when 9/11 happened. We were actually living in New York at the time.
Slams into the North Tower.
I recognized that it was bad. And I also recognized that there were tons of people helping. I wanted to do something of service.
Welcome to Johnston County. Here, your career aspirations can come to life in a thriving and friendly community. Step into our county departments and offices. Where teamwork defines our culture. Explore a wide range of job openings that contribute to our county's growth and development. With just a few clicks, you can start your application and join our team.
So, yeah, that was just a couple clips from the two videos that won. And that last one was a recruitment video. And it's actually johnstonnc.gov/jobs now. So, if you're out there looking to apply, that's where you need to go. But appreciate the recognition.
Any comments?
That was awesome.
Y'all do a great job. All day, every day. I mean, we see everything that you guys do. So, just to see you get awarded from other people, it's really great. So, kudos to y'all.
You make us proud.
Appreciate it.
Congratulations on much deserved recognition.
Yes. Thank you. I'm gonna get out of here, because y'all know...
Do you want a picture?
Photoshop one in. Photoshop one in. Yeah, that's even more funny. If you were here this morning, we had about five people, five sets of people take pictures this morning. So, all right, next up, we have the more traditional public comments. And this is an opportunity for the public to speak to the board. It's not an opportunity to engage in conversation, but it's an opportunity for the board to listen. So, if you would, when you come forward, and these are items that are not on the agenda. So, if you're not Boys and Girls Club or Clayton Chamber or presenting at the case, anything else is open there. But you do have three minutes. So, if you come, would you please state your name and your town or township that you are from? And keep things cordial. And since you're walking in the door, do you want to speak?
I'm catching my breath.
Okay. I do not know why?
Somebody would like to go first. I would definitely like this one tonight.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
Our favorite little person.
The videographer. Yeah, the videographer is with her.
Good evening. Thank you to the county commissioners for this opportunity to speak. My name is Shannon Halber, and I am the Johnston County Local Group Lead for Moms Demand Action for Gun Sense in America. We have been active here since August of 2022. Moms Demand is a national group of over 10 million volunteers bringing awareness and conversation of gun violence to our communities. We work to end gun violence. I'm here today to tell you how disappointed and sad I am that the commissioners did not approve our request for a proclamation declaring June 6, 2025 Gun Violence Awareness Day. National Gun Violence Awareness Day is an annual event that takes place on the first Friday in June and marks the beginning of Wear Orange Weekend. Wear Orange is dedicated to honoring the lives of people in the U.S., North Carolina, and Johnston County impacted by gun violence. This is what the proclamation is all about: awareness. Wear Orange originated on June 2, 2015, on what would have been Hadiya Pendleton's 18th birthday. Hadiya was 15 years old when she was shot and killed playing basketball in her neighborhood in Chicago. Wear Orange was inspired by her friends who, wanting to honor and remember Hadiya's life, decided to do so by wearing orange. One friend is remembered as saying, "What do we have to do? Wear orange so they won't shoot us?" So, they chose to wear orange, a color of safety. Hunters wear orange to announce themselves to other hunters when they're out in the woods. And orange is a color that symbolizes the value of human life. You recently have had proclamations, including Mental Health Awareness Month and proclaiming April 5 through the 11th as Week of the Young Child. Clearly, children and mental health are issues close to your hearts. I will remind everyone here that gun violence is the number-one cause of death for children in the U.S., North Carolina, and Johnston County. And suicide makes up the majority of gun deaths. I want to be perfectly clear about this. We cannot have a conversation about mental health, child safety, or public safety without a discussion of gun violence. This cannot be. Proclaiming June 6, 2025 Gun Violence Awareness Day allows us to remember and honor all those in our community affected by gun violence. The financial cost of gun violence to the U.S. is over $500 billion a year, and the cost to North Carolinians is $19.5 billion. But the human cost and the cost to our community of lost and traumatized lives is incalculable. I ask that you please reconsider and proclaim June 6, 2025 Gun Violence Awareness Day. Let's start the conversation and work together so that no more proclamations are needed. It all starts with awareness. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
I had to catch my breath, so excuse me a while ago. But thank y'all so much. My name is Liz. I'm a native from Johnston County, currently residing in Clayton, North Carolina. And I am here with a few members of our community organization called Down Home NC. And we just wanted to publicly thank a few of the commissioners that met with us earlier today, Commissioner Pace and Stevens. We were able to talk a little bit more in detail about our campaign. And we really appreciate, appreciated the listening ears. We also plan to continue that open communication with all of you and providing the data that we discussed earlier within like the next two weeks. We kind of talked about it after the meeting. So, that was the timeframe that we gave ourselves. I'm sorry, I'm still out of breath. But I work with a lot of amazing community people in Johnston County. And we collectively came together to advocate for healthy food, strong families. And we really encourage and want to get more support from the county commissioners on how y'all can do that. I have a one-pager. We shared it with some county commissioners earlier, but I wanted to provide it and make sure everybody was able to see that information and make sure that y'all know our doors are open to provide this information directly to you. Thank y'all so much. And we invite you, that was why I was running in here, I invite you, we invite you to our upcoming community events throughout May. We have initiated a really free market in Clayton. Everything is free, just like it says. We got a lot of good feedback last month when we started it. So, we invite you all to come out and see some fellow people in the Clayton area, as well as our chapter meeting. It's always the last Thursday of the month. And elected officials are always welcome to be a part of those conversations as well. So, thank you. That's all I had to say.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll pass these out to y'all.
Should y'all get them? Thank y'all so much. Here you go.
Thank you, sir. Take one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Thank you so much.
I already got one.
All right. Anyone else wishing to speak on an item that's not on the agenda? All right. And Madam Clerk, we have no emails for public comment, okay? And then, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is a presentation by the Boys and Girls Club. And I believe Kelly Blanchard is here to address us on that.
Good evening, commissioners and Mr. Hester. Obviously, my name is Kelly Blanchard. And I serve as the Director of Resource and Development for the Boys and Girls Clubs of Johnston County. Thank you all for allowing me to present tonight and respectfully request that the Board of Commissioners include the Boys and Girls Club of Johnston County in the 2026-2027 county budget. A prime example of some of our leadership initiatives is Liz, who was just here. She is a proud alumni of the Boys and Girls Clubs of Johnston County. And we are proud to see that, you know, she's able to come out and have gone through our programs and look at how she's able to use her leadership abilities today to really affect positive change in our community. Each year, our clubs in Selma and Smithfield. A lot of people don't recognize that we actually have an after-school program at South Smithfield Elementary School, but we do. So, we have the community-based club, and then, we have the school-based club. We serve approximately 250 youth, ages 6 to 16, offering a safe and supportive, enriching environment for them to come to after school, during the holidays, and during our summer camp programs. These are not just program participants. They are our future leaders, innovators, and neighbors. They come from households facing significant challenges. 99% qualify for free and reduced lunch and have lack of access to safe and structured youth development programs. Currently in Johnston County, we have 407 youth identified by the Johnston County Public Schools as being homeless. So, one of the things that we've implemented is being able to teach these children, some of which we do serve, access to essential life skills that are critical for them. We've implemented programs with Handpicked Nursery. So, he comes out and he teaches them about seeds and growing their own food. And especially now, as we're becoming more urban, what an urban garden looks like. We're not looking at victory gardens anymore, right? So, it's helping them to learn ways to self-sustain. We also offer other types of programs that help to build the skills, that promote self-sufficiency. And for many of the students in our county, our clubs are a lifeline to them in learning some of these programs, as they would not have these opportunities if it were not for our clubs. Our programs promote academic achievement, as we offer the tutoring programs in the afternoon, after the school programs. And then, we also help to prevent the summer slide during the summer, because we continue those educational literacy programs throughout those summer. We have healthy lifestyles and leadership development. Healthy lifestyles, the children in the summertime get to learn how to swim. So, if they don't know how to swim, that's something that they come to us and they're able to learn. And then, each summer, they can increase those swimming skills. Our STEMS and robotics programs, daily physical activity and nutrition, and service projects, that's a big thing we want to implement in them. We pour into them, and we want them to pour out into our community. We also address fundamental issues that are affecting Johnston County families, including substance misuse. Through the SMART Moves and Emotional Wellness Programming that we do, our youth build resilience and learn the healthy decision-making processes. We also incorporate education around prevention and intervention strategies. Our programs have a real economic impact. A national study by the Eton Analytics found that for every $1 invested in Boys and Girls Clubs generates $10.32 in economic benefits, thanks to improved academic performances, better health, and increased parental earnings when families have access to safe, reliable youth development centers. One of our parents, Lou Esco, wanted to write a statement. She couldn't be here tonight because she's working. So, "If it wasn't for the Boys and Girls Club, I couldn't be working. My child has learned so much at the club that she wouldn't have learned from a sitter. I feel at ease knowing that my child is safe and secure. In an era when families choose where to live based on the quality of their schools, community resources, and visible support for youth programs like ours, it is not just compassionate, it's strategic." Companies like Novo Nordis, Grifols, and Amazon partner with the Boys and Girls Clubs of Johnston County, because they recognize that supporting affordable, high-quality youth development programs helps to build the skilled, team-oriented workforce for tomorrow through early exposure to workforce development programs and learning and training. That's why your support matters more now than ever. When the Boys and Girls Club of Johnston County, along with local employers like Novo Nordis, Grifols, and Amazon, and in partnering with the Board of Commissioners, work together, we create more programs, we develop pathways, and pathways for working families to thrive today and for young people to become tomorrow's future leaders. Thank you so much for your time. I appreciate it. Do you have any questions?
Any questions for Ms. Blanchard?
Thank you.
Thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have the Clayton Chamber of Commerce. And Dana Wooton is here to present to us on their Launch JOCO program.
I wore heels, these things tall.
There you go. You're gonna have to adjust the microphone.
Okay. Am I going...
Very soon.
Ready? Good evening, Chairman Lauder and commissioners. I'm Dana Wooton, President/CEO of the Clayton Chamber of Commerce. And I'm here representing the Launch JOCO team and our county-wide coalition of partners. Each of you should have received a packet outlining Launch JOCO, including letters of support from our collaborators and a letter from the Secretary of State. I want to talk a little bit about our strong partnerships that we have created. We are partners with the Johnston County Chamber Coalition, Central Johnston and Clayton Rotary Clubs, Johnston Community College's Small Business Center, Johnston County Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority, Municipal Partners, and various business leaders. North Carolina has a record number of business startups since COVID. However, of these startups, 25% of these businesses fail within the first year, and 50% don't make it to seven years. Secretary of State Elaine Marshall said that Launch JOCO is a model for other counties and aligns with her Rural Rise North Carolina program. It is a comprehensive, replicable solution to improving small business outcomes in rural communities, as her program points to the resources. But it's programs like Launch JOCO that leverage these resources that makes the big difference. Oh, my God.
Where do they come from?
I'm gonna start crying. Okay. Oh, my goodness. Okay. Launch JOCO fills a critical gap for all the small businesses. I'm pulling a Melissa and not advancing my slides. Okay. Critical, it fills a critical gap for small business owners and entrepreneurs, particularly those from underserved communities who often lack access to mentorship, training, and capital. Our program equips them with the tools they need to work on their business, not just in it, helping them to build sustainable enterprises that uplifts their families and our communities. So, who is our target audience? We serve Johnston County-based entrepreneurs with a commitment to building a business. We do exclude nonprofits, franchises, and multi-market companies to focus on independent, small-business owners. I want to give you a little bit about our program in an overview. Launch JOCO provides business education, funding guidance, long-term mentorship, and access to a supportive network. These four pillars create a strong foundation for any entrepreneur. Launch JOCO is divided up into categories. We'll talk about Launch Now. Launch Now helps individuals build a strong business foundation through our partnership with the JCC Small Business Center, offering one-on-one counseling, free seminars, and access to essential resources. This program prepares entrepreneurs to confidently apply for Launch Next the following year. So, what is Launch Next? Launch Next offers a 14-week business education academy, six months of mentorship, and grant opportunities for growth-stage businesses. Participants must attend all classes, complete assignments, give a final pitch, and commit to six months' worth of mentorship. This ensures that only committed individuals receive program resources. Some of the class topics that they learn about are foundational business principles, marketing, pricing, forecasting, and how to create a pitch. Each module builds toward launching or scaling a viable business. The next aspect is after the classroom work is mentoring. So, why mentoring? Mentoring is a key predictor of business success. Entrepreneurs with mentors are five times more likely to succeed, and 83% have revenue growth. Mentoring builds confidence, accelerates learning, and helps avoid costly mistakes. It also helps to shorten the learning curve, boost accountability, and provide emotional support during the ups and downs of entrepreneurship. They really are the backbone of our support system. Our final tier is Launch Beyond. And Launch Beyond provides monthly continuing education and networking for alumni of Launch and is open to all business owners. Launch alumni attend this program for free, and other businesses pay a small fee. These programs supplement and complement JCC Small Business Center's program, as they are enabled to host courses on soft skills or durable skills, such as communication and conflict resolution. So, what's the impact of this program been so far? We have received over 140 applications, 72 accepted, and 69 graduates. That's almost a 96% graduation rate. And we would be at 100% if those graduates hadn't had to drop out for personal reasons. These are promising entrepreneurs across Johnston County, particularly concentrated in the Clayton, Selma, Benson, and Smithfield area. The Four Oaks Chamber has now joined as a partner, and we look forward to increasing their small-business participation next year. Some of our community involvement is 56 local businesses have invested in Launch JOCO through funding and/or mentorship. I think I skipped a bit. Sorry about that. The program has awarded $17,000 in student grants and received nearly $80,000 in community support. I feel like this kind of buy-in shows how much our community values small-business development. As you can see from the first slide, Clayton does account for over half of our graduates, but we've seen growth across the county over the years, and we see that increasing yearly. Launch JOCO is reaching entrepreneurs wherever they are and helping them thrive. Our strong partnership, as I've mentioned, with the Small Business Center ensures that entrepreneurs get the right resources at the right time, whether that's starting with the Small Business Center programs or advancing through Launch JOCO. We are creating a seamless pipeline of support. Volunteer and staff commitment. I can't tell you how much these volunteers and staff have dedicated to this program. This program represents more than 11,000 hours of volunteer and staff dedication. This program includes program development, mentorship, coaching, and outreach. The human capital behind this program is absolutely extraordinary. Next slide. I have three testimonies up here on the screen, and there's several more in your packet. But I think the huge testimony in this room is standing right behind me, because these are the faces of the people who this program has made a difference in their life. They have stopped working full-time, and they're pursuing their dream and their purpose. They have scaled and grown their business. They have scaled and grown their business. They have increased their business footprint. They have hired workforce, and I just can't tell you what a heart project this is for me and everybody else involved to see the difference that this program is making in people's lives. So this is the face of Launch JOCO behind me. So I can give you the program overview, and I can give you all kinds of statistics, but this is what matters. So I just want to give you real quick a program summary. It's a countywide small business development initiative designed for entrepreneurs at all stages from startup to growth and beyond. 14 weeks of business education, six months of one-on-one mentorship, access to microgrants for qualified graduates, and a focus on underserved populations and economic mobility, supported by local businesses and donors, and it strengthens Johnston County's entrepreneur ecosystem. This is a brief overview of the schedule and timeline of what this program looks like. It runs from January to November, begins with student orientation, weekly business classes, culminating in a pitch night and a graduation ceremony. Many of you have attended that in the past. Mentorship is woven throughout the program, reinforcing the lessons that I've learned in the classroom. Behind the scenes, the Launch JOCO team is planning for the next cohort or class that begins in June, with applications opening in July and August. Candidate interviews are conducted in September, and applicants not selected for the Launch JOCO program are referred to the Small Business Center to help them continue to develop their business concept. So how are we currently funded? This program is absolutely free to all of our participants. So we are currently funded by sponsorships from other businesses, which accounts for 52% of our funding. Donations account for 27%, and grants 18.8%. We are very, very thankful for the support that we've gotten over the years for this program. We have KS Bank believing in this program before its inception and been the presenting sponsor of this program. Delta Sigma Theta has believed in this program from the very beginning, and so many others. But the growing demand requires sustainable public-private partnerships, which brings us to why we are here. We are requesting a line item budget in economic development for $75,000 annually. The breakdown would be $30,000 for microgrants so we can give back to our small businesses, $20,000 to help with program coordination, $10,000 for curriculum development, and $15,000 for ongoing business support. These funds would be performance-based and evaluated yearly through metrics set jointly by the Commissioners and the Launch JOCO team. So that is our ask. I just want to say in closing that Launch JOCO is more than a program. It's a pathway to economic self-sufficiency for our residents and a catalyst for small business growth here in Johnston County. Your investment in this initiative is an investment in real people, who are standing behind me, real businesses, and long-term vitality of our communities. We have the model, and we have the momentum, and with your funding, we can ensure that its impact reaches every corner of this county, and Johnston County will continue to cultivate, or Launch JOCO will continue to cultivate, the entrepreneurial spirit of Johnston County one business at a time. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any questions for Dana?
I have a comment. I'm proud of KS Bank. It's rare that I see President Earl Worley in a room that he's not the tallest one there, but I see councilmen. Marlon Lee is back there also, I believe. Great. Good presentation.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the...
Yeah, so I did want to, you recognized Marlon from Smithfield Council, but we do have somebody from Raleigh City Council, Mayor Protem, I believe, Storm. And I like, it's like first Madonna, something like that. Score me, and is it Fort? Fort? Fort. Then we served recently on a panel together at Central Pines. It's always scary to sit beside her because she does such a great job speaking, so it's good to have you in Johnston County again. I know she comes here as part of the court system, so good to have you with us tonight.
In her red.
In her red. There's no doubt that Delta Sigma Theta women stand out in their reds.
Yes, they do.
But thank you.
Thank you so much for allowing us to speak.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here.
Chairman and Board, I just wanted to say, as a former mentor in this program, it is without a doubt a phenomenal program.
Obviously, it's very successful.
Yes.
I wish we had a bigger room.
Yeah. That's what Patrick said on the way in.
I've heard that argument.
I heard it's on the list.
I just need three more votes. We can make it happen. We need more.
Mr. Chairman, just want to say thank you.
Oh, yeah, good to see you again.
Good to see you.
Yeah, she's, she's a juvenile justice. Is that what she thinks? Yeah, I think that's what she is. DS, yeah, she does something.
Yeah, I think it's juvenile justice, I think.
I think she said she was done coming in.
I was about to say, it ain't going to be inside.
Yeah.
The rest of the meeting looks a little lackluster after that.
Yeah. All right. Do we have our applicant here for the next case?
Yes.
There we go. There we go. Okay, okay. All right, so we do have one special use hearing tonight on the agenda, and that's case 1813. That's actually a modification of the existing special use permit. I will now call on the clerk to swear in those who are wishing to speak tonight. So we will, our deputy clerk to do that, so yeah. So if you wish to speak, please step forward to be sworn in. All right. First, we will have our plain director, Brastin Newton, to present the case background on this.
Yes, sir. As previously stated, we do have...
Could we, could we, Slush, would you mind kind of, since this is a special use and we have gotten away from, could you mind kind of stating the rules and what the guidelines and what we're supposed to consider to vote on this?
I'd be happy to do that. So this is, I was actually just talking with Ms. Coats about this process, but this process is a little different than what you typically do. This process is a quasi-judicial matter, and so you take the facts and testimony as it is presented to you today to make your determination. And of course, in that, there are certain findings of fact that you need to make, and information about that is contained within your packet as to what those standards are. But those are the things that you are to consider. The burden of proof for this is on the applicant, so it's the applicant's responsibility to explain to you how this project modification fits with the standards that are required in the ordinance. And this is a little bit different because it's a modification. It's only asking for one additional use of uses that have already been approved. But as you consider this additional use, you do need to think about those standards that are in the ordinance. And if you need more direction or more information about specifically what those are, I would be happy to go through that. But it's about public interest, that it conforms with the surrounding area, those sorts of things that you may remember from times back.
So if you don't mind, I don't see those four findings. Could you touch on each one of those four?
Do we have the application, Brastin?
The information we have is just like one page.
It is.
Yeah.
So the standards that you're required to consider for the modification, and again, this is just, you're not considering the entire project, you're considering the additional request for tattooing for this particular location. But number one, the finding of fact that you need to make is that the use or development is located, designed, and proposed to be operated so as to maintain or promote the public health, safety, and general welfare. Number two, that the use of the development appears to comply with all the required use and intensity regulations of the Land Development Code, and that it meets all of the standards and applicable regulations. Number three, that it's designed or located and proposed to be operated so as to maintain, enhance the value of contiguous property, or that the use is a public necessity. And then number four, that the use or development conforms with the general plans for fiscal development within the county's Planning Jurisdiction Design Manual and other policies of the Board of Commissioners. So those are the four things that you will be considering as you think about this application.
Okay. All right. Sorry about that. Mr. Newton, if you would proceed on with the case background.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I stated case 18-13, this is a request for modification of an existing special use permit for property located at 3919 Raleigh Road in the Cleveland Township. The owner and applicant is Amanda McNulty, and the request, or the requested amendment to the special use permit is to allow the use of a private tattoo studio to that special use permit. Excuse me. The, with regard to our land use plan, this particular area, this property is in an area that's designated as low-density residential place type. The original special use permit was approved in 2018 and has been in compliance since that date in terms of the conditions, the conditions that were specified in that permit. At this time, I'll ask that the deputy clerk bring up the conditions to the special use permit that were originally approved, as you can see those on the screen. The, in item number seven or condition number seven, you will see hours of operation. There's a strike through from Sunday, Monday through Sunday, 7:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. That was changed during those hearings to 6:00 a.m., from 6:00 a.m. to midnight. Glad to answer any questions you may have. My understanding is there's no expansion to any structures on the property or the footprint.
Any questions for Mr. Newton? All right. If not, we would like to hear from the applicant. If you would state your name and address for the record, please.
Yes. I'm Amanda McNulty. My business is at 3919 Raleigh Road, Clayton, 27520. So if you guys aren't familiar, the business is called Atmosphere Community Arts Center. Been established since 2018. We're called, I named it a community arts center because the community was a big part of what we wanted to portray there. So just in general, we do art classes for adults, kids, teens. We have a clay studio. We also make a lot of partnerships with the community organizations. We have a nonprofit garden club that runs on the property as well. We have music lessons there. We do kids' parties there. We, you know, we have, we have a lot of fun. It's very family-oriented. We do a couple of events for the community that are free to the public every year. So our outreach and partnership is kind of what's important to me as a business owner. So recently, I had, in this past year, I had met Tina Gray and her, so her business partner, Shar, who would like to do, they're both artists, they're tattoo artists. They have a business, they work in Clayton already. They want to downsize, and I have space. I'd like to bring them in as tattoo artists, but they're a little bit more than that. I'm not just trying to put a tattoo studio in only. They're very aligned with the community aspect. They, on their own, already do a lot of community events. They're artists that would put their art in the studio. They would do art classes with me. We want to just use part of the building. We have a small space that I want to use right now. It's about 130 square feet. We may expand them if space were available to like about 400 square feet, so like a bigger room. But that would depend on the Health Department, like after, you know, we would all, we already have talked, and they have a good relationship with Ashley at the Johnston County Health Department already. She's already been out, she's done a water test, she looked at the place to make sure it was something that would fit with their standards. I've already worked with the environmental people, and they have updated their permit that it would be okay to use this space for that. We are not going to include any expansions such as parking is needed. This is going to be just literally private, like one person in, getting their tattoo, and making an appointment. It's not open to the public. There's not going to be signs on the road saying, "Come in, tattoos." You know, I want to keep it as it is, community-oriented. So that said, no additional parking is going to be needed, anything like that. It's just one, we do, you know, lessons like private, one-on-one lessons all the time where people come in and out, so it won't be more than just like one car coming in, one car coming out. It is going to be, they're going to use a space that's more private. Right now, it's upstairs, and so it'll just be, and they'll have their own, they have a door that they can use themselves if they want to. But more than that, they're going to be, you know, we're going to have an art show where they're part of the arts, you know. So it's going to be aligned with my mission as the owner and CEO, I guess, of Atmosphere. There's not going to be, just to set your mind at ease, they're not going to, it's just tattooing and being part of the art classes. No piercing, no permanent tattoo. We're not going like beyond just the tattoo part. And they are artists, so respectable artists, and have a lot of good following, you know, for their art that they want to put on people's bodies instead. Let's see, is there anything I missed? There are two of them. We're going to stay within the hours that you see there, 6:00 a.m. to midnight. However, we've already talked, and there's no interest in being here at 6:00 a.m. So there'll be something like 10:00 a.m. to 8:30 for tattoo only. You know, occasionally, our classes, our classes will go to 9:00 or 9:30, 10:00, you know, or something like that, but their tattooing part will only go till 8:30, 8:00 p.m. at the latest. So just to make sure that was something you guys knew. Let's see. I think I covered everything in my notes that I wanted to. What questions can I answer for any of you guys? And also brought Tina here, and she can, you can bring her up if she, one of the artists and you guys have questions for her, too.
Any questions? So I will ask, so you heard the four findings of fact that...
Yes.
...that we need to address?
Yeah.
And I know the information that was in the prior application in this one, is it your opinion that you meet all four of those criteria?
Yes, sir, I do. Yes, I was kind of, I rewrote them down just so I could make sure I knew what they were. Public health and safety. Feel pretty confident with the environmental and the Health Department being involved, and already looked at the space and talked to them and had it inspected. We haven't gone forward with any inspection, just so you know, as far as the Health Department, because we have to, we're going to wait till it's approved before we go through with everything, but she's already been out to look at it, Ashley has. And then we're meeting and continue to meet all the regulations that are set, enhancing the, I guess, what did you call it? Maintain and enhance the public interest? Is that what it was? But bringing arts to the community is just extremely important. I could go on and on about that. But yeah, I believe our business enhances the community and what we offer. General plans and development, I mean, if any of you guys live over that area, but I'm certainly sure you're certainly familiar with the Cleveland area, just busting at the seams. So we're, we feel pretty confident that it goes along with the development, the interest in the business, and people's interest in getting art put on their bodies and being, and seeing these new artists being part of the business would be of interest in, with the county's development in that area. I feel like it's all addressed.
So I would just propose to the board that, I know you started at 130, but said maybe up to 400, but we said a maximum of 500 square feet, and then the hours of operation would be from 10:00 to 8:30. Would that be agreeable to you?
Yeah, how do you feel about that, Tina? Okay.
Okay. So that would just be.
It gives them the flexibility without having
That's right. Yeah, yeah. I don't want to say 130, and then you'd move from upstairs to downstairs.
Right, yeah, 500, that's great.
We'd love for you to come, but we don't want you to come.
I don't want to keep doing this now.
What was the number, days a week? That was another question, so.
How many days a week? I don't know, is it just dependent on your client?
On average, Shar and I don't really overlap a lot, so it would be, it could run seven days.
So it's already Monday through Sunday anyway? So we could just leave the time and just say, and we could just say Monday to Sunday and leave that?
Yeah, I think it's, since it's private appointments, it would be kind of.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
I appreciate you also mentioning you've already had Health Department out before. That's really helpful.
Yes, and Tina Gray has a good relationship with Ashley in the Health Department, so that was one of the most important things, to get out there and make sure that she approved and it was a good fit and follow in all the safety guidelines. That's part of being a tattoo artist.
Have we heard from any neighbors for or against either way?
No, sir, we have not. Okay.
Most of my neighbors are pretty happy to come over and be part of Arts Center usually, so I was feeling pretty good about that, but.
All right, and I think that's all we have, and thank you.
Thank you guys for hearing, hearing about it. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I will close the public hearing. Mr. Newton, is there anything else you need to add to this before we go into deliberation?
Yes, sir. Just wanted to mention two things. One, four findings are up on the screen for you to reference as you go forward with any motion. In addition, if you do move forward and it is, the request is approved, we would ask that you form a motion such that we would add the use to item number one in the existing conditions, and then add line item number 10 to include the operation hours for the tattoo studio, be limited Monday through Sunday, 10:00 a.m. to 8:30 p.m.
And the space, where would we?
And the space, you can place that, you can place that as item 11 or in the same number 10 as well, since it's directly related to that use.
Well, that's strictly specific to the tattoo.
Yes, yes, yes. Correct. All right.
Yes, sir.
I'm ready to make a motion. He just made it that much more difficult, but I'll do my best. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the special use permit modification with regards to case 1813 and add the use to include a tattoo parlor, and additionally add line number 10, that the hours of operation be from 10:00 a.m. to 8:30 p.m. And additionally, line number 11, that the space could be up to 500 square feet.
All right, and 10 would be Monday through?
Monday.
Through Sunday.
Yeah, Monday through Sunday, 10:00 a.m. to 8:30, I'm sorry.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All right. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Any opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have manager reports and comments. All right. Board reports and comments. Ms. Davis, I'll start with you.
Nothing from this morning.
I would just remind the general public that might be listening, that Memorial Day service this year on the, Memorial Day, 26th, I believe it is. Yeah, May 26th, and it'll be at the large courtroom.
All right.
Like last year. Pardon?
Livestream.
Yeah, livestream. That's good.
11:00. 11:00 o'clock?
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
I don't have anything.
Mr. Rose?
Nothing.
Chair Harris?
No, sir, nothing.
I have nothing as well, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
All in favor? We are adjourned.